What, what job, what, what her job description changed to, 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 to go from thirty-one to eighty-three thousand?
I, I can't answer that.
She's doing the same thing, right, is right here. Finance, personnel coordinator. HR is a fancy word, fancy letters for personnel coordinator. You know that, you should.
I, I know that, I'm just.
It's right here.
But that pay increase happened prior to the city manager being here, when on three-ten, she was given a raise, uh, by the interim city manager, Brian, uh, from, from seventy, she, from seventy-six, four-forty to eighty-three, two-hundred. So that, her, her salary was already high. Whether, whether she came in under, under Kim Davis's administration at a high pay rate, we don't know, uh, we can find out, but the city manager didn't give that raise.
So hold on, so thirty-one thousand, it was thirty-one thousand at the beginning of the year, and then it got to seventy-four thousand, then to eighty-three thousand. So all that, all that happened, I know, I understand you can't answer all that, all those questions right now, but we all, we probably need to understand, uh,
Okay.
Uh, just, just how that.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, Sharon, did you address this, or?
Prior to the raise.
Well, before the thirty-one.
But that, that number's coming out of the, the budget, and, and so, you know, I think, I think when, when the HR came on board, I think that she was hired at a higher rate. Uh, and, and that's, that's, that's how it got to that, to that max.
The administrative assistant only makes thirty-seven thousand for this last week. Thirty-seven thousand.
So, Mayor and Council, so just to go back a little bit, when, when I was appointed as the interim city manager, I came in, and what I did is, straight off the back, is, is communicate with Sharon, and, uh, brought Sharon in to assist me with some of the duties that, that involved that. Understand too, that I was doing a dual role as chief and interim city manager, so what I was using was Sharon, Sharon to assist me with my administration duties. So the pay increase that I, that I pushed up, I would have to go back and double check, was under my direction, was an interim pay.
For, for added duties.
For added duties, under an interim pay. So it wasn't, it wasn't a permanent pay, it was an interim, uh, interim basis, so.
Did, did her title change? Did you, did you change her title?
Her title was still HR, she was just taking additional roles under an interim basis. So my understanding was, an interim basis is, it's only temporary until we make the changes that we need.
The thing is that, uh, on the paperwork that, that was submitted for her pay increase, uh, it says current title and then new title, and it should've said interim, um, so that it would revert.
But, but the title, the title changed too.
Her title didn't change.
Well, let, let me clarify another thing. Both the chief and his lieutenant were both raised during that period of time, and now they've been lowered back to what they were before, right?
But, but that's not, I don't know if that's the issue, that's.
Why wasn't she lower? That's the question.
But, but the, the increase that chief gave her and that the city manager gave her, are minimal to the increase that is budgeted to seventy-six thousand, so there's a bit, there's.
The thing is, she was interim to the chief. Her pay, and I'm, and, I'm, I'm not talking person, I'm talking title. If the chief's interim pay went down and the lieutenant's pay went down, why didn't hers go down after everything was done and settled and this man came on board?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like nobody knew that it was, that it was interim.
The chief just said it.
He, he just said it, but, but what I'm saying is Bobby just said it wasn't on the, on the form.
The paperwork.
Yeah.
So you got the paperwork?
I do, I requested it. I requested it.
Well, and, and that, that's probably gonna be something that maybe I overlooked, but under my, my, uh, my discussion back and forth was, my understanding was that it was under interim, so.
Are there other positions?
Well, who, who did the paperwork?
Well, I do the signatures, so. I must, it's either something that I overlooked as far as the interim portion of it, but my discussion with her was that it was under interim basis only.
So are there, are there other positions that could, could potentially be in the same, that, that, that could be under?
Under, under, when I was interim city manager, I believe there was only several, and I think that we, uh, or the city manager discussed those, as far as myself, the lieutenant, and I believe it was, uh, the assistant city secretary, 'cause she stepped up to do the city secretary role.
And Val Sanchez in the electric department, so I'm pulling up Val Sanchez, uh, personnel change form, and he went from electric crew leader to interim electric superintendent, and it says interim. So it's from current to interim, so on Sharon's, it does not say interim.
Well, let's move on, I think this will be discussed further. I think, uh, as he mentioned, he's been experienced many years in administration and all. I just happen to also have a lot of experience along that line, and, and, uh, I just, we have problems with some of these staff changes.
I agree with you, Mayor, 'cause we don't make the decisions at this table, at least I don't. I don't make the decisions at this table according to what other cities do. I'm concerned about Hondo, I'm not concerned about Angleton, Divine, Pierceville, Uvalde, or anybody else. I'm concerned about Hondo, and what they do is their thing, and what you did over there was something else, and this has been the way the city of Hondo's been operating, and I think it should be kept that way.
Well, let me add, let me add to, let me add to that though, 'cause I, I think, I think that staff knows best what kind of resources he needs to support his, his position. And for us to get up here and say, well, it's always been that way, so we should just keep it that way?
But what's for Angleton?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm, I'm talking. Just because it's always been that way, that's what we need, is a city manager to come in here and see where, where we can, you know, find some money for, so that the taxpayers don't have to, to handle that. Or, or we could use it for other projects.
Let me just say that.
So, I, 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 I'm, I am for, if you, if you believe that's a good decision, I'm for that.
He's deleting positions, Brett, how is that good for the city of Hondo? He deleted three.
Let me clarify something. The only time this council has the opportunity to deal in these matters is when we set the budget.
Correct.
After that, the budget's set, the man runs the city according to the budget. So this is the only time we have that input.
Cutting, cutting positions happens in every business.
We need a city, we need an executive system for him. He's deleting three positions. Three.
And, and that, and that's a management, that's where he's proposing, and that's a management decision.
And we're talking about the budget, we can talk about it right now.
We don't oversee the operation.
We're talking about the budget.
We oversee the budget.
Right, we do oversee the budget, but I, I mean, these cutting positions happens every year, every company across this, across this country, it happens. It's, this isn't, this isn't the first time that somebody's come in and cut positions that weren't necessary.
We're in the business of cutting stuff.
Before we wrap up, we'll come back to some of this, so for right now, I think we need to move forward with the, with the budget.
All right, we'll go to the next slide, proposed changes to city fees. Briefly mentioned this in, in the opening, the sanitation fee obviously will increase a little bit this year, based upon our contract. Sanitation fee is obviously reevaluated every year by Republic Waste. Uh, it can increase anywhere from two to four percent. We won't have a final number for Republic Waste until sometime in August, and we'll be able to firm up that, but I think Judy included a two percent increase in this year's upcoming budget. Airport hangar fees, uh, I think for the majority of the hangars, not all of them, the fee will increase from a hundred and seventy dollars to a hundred and seventy-five. And then the fair hall fees, uh, that we are, that we're currently assessing are similar to what the Fair Association was, uh, charging when they were overseeing the operations and management. The only fee that, uh, we changed is that I believe, uh, the Fair Association had an extra day fee of roughly a hundred and fifty dollars, but then they also charged a fee for air conditioning of, of how much? A three-fifty. So we're charging the extra day fee, but we're not charging for the air conditioning. That's the only difference from the fees that they had previously. And there are some changes to the development fees, uh, I'm hesitant to, the, the minor fees are in your packet. I would much rather prefer to have Laura address those fees, uh.
Can I ask you a question, Scott? What is a five-dollar increase in hangar fees gonna do for the city? A five-dollar increase?
I'll let, uh, Ryan address that question.
Thank you for the question, Johnny. In twenty-nineteen, we, uh, the Airport Advisory Board and us met to discuss the hangar fees, uh, previous to, to the increase, it was a hundred and sixty dollars for about ten years. So we discussed on, uh, increasing the hangar rents to, to be more market, you know, uh, more competitive and realistic. Uh, we, we still maintain to be the lowest hangar fee, uh, in the area. Uh, we decided to, their recommendation was to increase it five dollars a year for five years, to get it up to a more, uh, realistic number.
But that, that doesn't answer my question. My question is, what is five dollars gonna do? How is five dollars gonna help in an increase of five dollars?
It, it just, it helps, you know, helps the airport, it helps the airport fund.
Just kinda keeps us in the market area.
It, well, not only that, but it helps the airport fund, which we all know is, uh, it struggles a little bit, so. But we also, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we remain competitive.
But in what way is it gonna help? I'm just curious, in what way is a five-dollar increase gonna help? This is five dollars?
Well, it's, it's, it's. It's spread out over about forty-six hangars, it's for the private T-hangers, so it adds about, uh, I can't remember the exact amount, uh, but it adds about a little over a thousand dollars to the, to the budget, which, which helps the airport fund.
That was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the fees? All right. All right, the next slide is the capital program for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. There's only two columns, obviously, in this PowerPoint slide to the left. You'll see the department, uh, administration, we have seventy-five thousand dollars earmarked for, uh, city hall remodel, which will basically be, uh, the old city manager suite over here, that's where we intend to move development services. And if we have enough, enough funds left over after remodeling this side, we're gonna move into, uh, I believe it was the old city secretary's office, and remodel that area for finance. And then, of course, you go down to grants, the third line item, that's the majority of grants that we're pursuing this year. Streets, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars would reflect the Fourteenth Street project. And then again, if you go all the way down to water, and you look at the one-point-one million, that's mainly for AMI water meters. And then the wastewater treatment plant, we have five-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars for improvements, rehabbing the clarifiers, the bar screen, uh, I forget, what else do we have in there?
Rehabbing clarifiers, uh, sluice gate, uh, compactor.
Right, right, so we have a total capital program for this upcoming year of roughly five-point-seven million dollars.
But we receive a list of those capital, like we always have the scheduled on capital funds.
It's in your budget, sir.
It's in the budget, good.
Yes, sir.
The other question I had, if, if we don't get one of the grants, then that'll be offset with the expenses for that grant, right?
Uh, the only grant that I'm aware of at this point, sir, that we're probably not going to get, that, that's in your budget, would be the CDBG grant for the downtown, downtown sidewalks. I spoke with Judy Langford, uh, a week ago, and we're not, we're not gonna get it for this upcoming year. The CDBG for the wastewater treatment plant, we're more than likely going to receive. I won't hear about the tech stock grant until probably October, so.
But if we don't get this downtown grant, the expenses for that'll come off the other side, so.
That's correct, that's correct, yes, sir. All right, the next slide is capital asset, capital assets, funding the, uh, like, like I'm used to saying lease-purchase agreement. So I talked about this briefly at the very beginning of my presentation. Staff is recommending that we go out on, um, a loan to purchase several pieces of equipment for this upcoming fiscal year. That loan is roughly six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars, uh, over a five-year term. Interest rate will be two-point-four, and then annual payments would be a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. I'll go down the list, real quickly, of the, uh, capital assets that we intend to purchase with this loan. The animal care services will purchase the transit van. Streets, uh, we're gonna purchase a four-ton hot recycler slash patcher. Uh, also on streets, we're gonna purchase a Ford three, F-three-fifty flatbed. Parks, we're gonna purchase a truck. Recreation, a Ford F-one-fifty. Uh, golf course, we're gonna purchase, uh, a mower. And then IT, we're gonna purchase a transit van, which Josh desperately needs, 'cause he's tired of using his personal car and driving around the different city facilities to take care of, uh, our IT. Uh, electric, we're gonna purchase a bucket truck. And then water, we're gonna purchase a diesel generator for the well site, I think it's a prison well site. And then for wastewater, we're gonna also purchase a truck. Any question on, uh, funding those capital assets?
Which ones are those replacements, and which ones are, uh, additional?
They're all additional.
I think.
Except the bucket truck.
No, uh, parks is a replacement, rec is a replacement, um, animal care services a replacement. Streets would be an additional, and the IT vehicle would be an additional, as well as wastewater. They currently have two trucks for five employees.
Would the bucket, bucket truck be a replacement as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, these are, that model is.
Or bucket truck?
It's a two-thousand-eight model, so after I got off the phone with you, I, I inquired about it. So it's, it's a two-thousand-eight model, and so it's, it's, we're putting a lot of money into repairs.
Yeah, they say they roughly last about ten years, and it's over that ten-year mark. So just to be cautious with safety and employees being in the bucket truck, it'd be a replacement.
We, we talked about this before, and I don't think anything has ever got, gotten done. Who does all the maintenance on these vehicles that the city owns? Who does the maintenance on the trucks, the bucket truck?
So we don't have a central maintenance, uh, position that manages all the maintenance on the fleets. It's really up to the department heads individually to manage their fleet for their department. Uh, it varies what vendor they use, whether it's a local vendor, the dealership, uh, but they maintenance them individually as a department.
So they just utilize local businesses for that?
Exactly, we've discussed possibly in the future, maybe arranging with a vendor to, do an agreement where we go to a central vendor, but currently, right now, it's spread across the town. Really, it's, it comes back down to who offers the lowest bid, um, essentially.
Council, we know there's a lot of areas that we need to work on in this budget, but we have limited time this year, and this is just one of them. It's something that we're gonna look at in the upcoming years as well, also.
I think that's important, because I know some of these departments aren't really capable of doing the maintenance. For instance, the police, they're supposed to be out policing and they're out fixing their vehicles. But I think some, something needs to be done to corral all that into, to general supervision.
That's what I was asking, that, that department itself is not doing the maintenance on these vehicles?
Maybe not.
Well, I think they're, they're, they're sending it places, but just, just keeping track of all that maintenance would be, would be a task.
Exactly.
So, is there, have you, in your, with your, in your experience?
We usually contract it with, uh, you know, if we didn't have in-house service, we would contract out with, uh, a particular repair shop, or we'd contract out with, uh, you know, an oil lube shop, it depends.
Okay, but you're gonna, you're gonna, y'all are gonna look at, uh,
Right, 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 right.
How to maybe move forward.
Right, right.
I have the same question, are any of these that were in projected over years past twenty-two?
I'm sorry.
In other words, our current capital list is what we do each year and different things. I was just curious if any of these have been moved up out of, out of, out of years in the future?
Some of the items were on the capital plan, but a lot of them was just, uh, staff really needs the items. They brought the request this year for the needed item, whether it's they have more employees than they have vehicles. So really, just addressing the staff's concern, it, some may have not been in the five-year capital plan, but we brought them as a priority, given that they're being stranded on the side of the road with their vehicle, because it's not functioning correctly.
I don't wanna make this go all night, but I, I, I just, the, the street sweeper, is there any update on that?
David, can you give an update?
Constant problem.
Yeah.
I told you going down the street the other day. Down more than it's up.
The street sweeper wasn't currently looked at bid-wise, but we have had some demos come by, and they've given, given us a budgetary idea, and we're in the range of about two-thirty for a suitable replacement. One of the big changes would be, we would go from a, a system that actually uses high-pressure air down on the asphalt, which, as you can imagine, tends to wanna peel the asphalt, to a system that's just brush rollers, so. That would be one of the big changes with, with any new unit.
The current one is working, right?
It just received some extensive root air, a new engine.
Oh, so, so we, we need to let that one go for a while.
It, it's a gamble, but we make those gambles every year.
That's good, it's working.
Yes, it is working currently, thank you.
Scott, since we're talking vehicles, I'm looking at my notes from the budget retreat of June the seventh of this year, and I'm looking at my notes that, that pertain to the, to the police department, and I, I flipped to that page, because here, in the budget book that you gave us for tonight, you put, there are no significant changes to the PD budget this year. All right, that may be. But in my notes from June the seventh, we were talking about, when the chief made his presentation to us, um, need more officers as crime assaults continue to continue to increase. Hondo PD has shorted five officers, the ratio is two losses for every one-thousand people. Currently have eight radios that are outdated. And then I have a side note here, when we were talking about vehicles, and I think that, uh, Brett, and we all made, you know, we were chuckling, 'cause everyone's, hey, I need a vehicle, I need two vehicles. Well, the, during his presentation, he, 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 there was an extra police car that Cecil Atkinson Ford bought, and it was, been sitting there collecting dust. And we, he, he related to us that for the cars that he has junked, that could be traded in as is, that he could obtain the police cruiser for twenty-three thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm, I'm reading my notes, I'm, I am not making this up, because I've been asked that before to make, to make things up, but there's my pretty writing from June the seventh. I, I've heard nothing about that. And, uh, my, the next note here, it says, amend the budget to maybe add an officer before the fiscal year ends this year to include the vehicle. Currently down one police vehicle. And we're talking, and, and then I'm, you know, talking about the Cecil Atkinson. So, since we're already ending the fiscal year, nothing has transpired of this. And this is from June the seventh, here we are July twenty-seventh, the month. Over a month. Why haven't we addressed this issue before we go on to the new budget? Because you said no significant changes, and, and I, I mean, I can still read some more here. Bulletproof vest, another car.
Do you have a specific, there are several issues there.
Nothing's addressed.
All, all I can tell you is that the budget that the chief submitted to us, he got everything he asked for. And the budget does include purchasing two new vehicles?
That car is still sitting up there.
Well, I can't, I, I don't know, I mean, uh.
Well, I was, I was gonna wait until we got to the police department budget, but I'm firmly in favor of having them purchase the vests they need, the cameras they need, uh, radios they need, and, uh, and that car, uh, which would be a total of about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Somewhere we need to get it, whether it be in the American Rescue Funds, somewhere we need to get that equipment for the police department in the budget.
Shouldn't that have come from the, the, the chief in the budget request?
I don't know, but I know that's what they need.
If, if they got everything they needed, and it came from the person in charge of the police department, I, 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 I'm not opposed to going back and looking at these things, I remember that conversation, you're, you're dead on, and, and you're right, we need to get them the, the, the things that they need, but we also need to, you know, they, they, we need to go follow up with this.
We, we didn't cut anything from the police department budget, everything he asked for, we gave.
Well, I'm saying, what, above what he requested, that's what he, what they need.
Well, I didn't think it's worth looking, going back and looking at it, just to see.
Okay.
But, but yes, but, I mean, noted that, noted that everything that he asked for, he got in the budget.
This was before this question. This request is before we discussed tonight.
That's true.
So it hasn't been acted on.
Every department head is responsible for submitting their request.
So, we wanna go ahead and be forward with purchasing another car in the current fiscal year, which is in, in the budget?
Out of American Rescue Fund.
Well, I'm just asking, you wanna purchase a car in the current fiscal year, which currently is not in the budget? Is that what you wanna do?
It's not in the budget, it's not in the, Mayor, did, did we approve that? Back a while, few months ago, did we approve the extra vehicle?
So we, we amended the budget when his first vehicle went down. Uh, we did an emergency purchase, he purchased a vehicle. I think the situation now is another vehicle has gone down, so they are in need of a replacement. So that's what you all are discussing. Currently now, they're saying that there is a vehicle left over when they purchased the first emergency purchase. Now they have another vehicle down that they're wanting to trade in, all of the junk vehicles for, to replace the vehicle that's down this fiscal year. Next physical.
I think it ought to be bought.
Well, those are the four things I know they need. And we've gotta give the police department the things they need. Good example is this last week when they had to stop being, I mean, they need the equipment, especially the vests and the radios and all that they don't have.
Oh, they're getting it.
Yeah, and I, I have full faith in Brian to let the city manager know what he needs.
Especially if we have a vehicle that just went down, I mean, we need to communicate that, and if there's one sitting there, you know.
And, and, and the June sevens meeting also, it's worth pointing out that all the department heads came to the table, and they all went over, you know, everybody need more people, everybody needed more stuff, and some of that was nice to have, some of that was required, and so there was a lot of discussions about that in every single department. But, again, if, if the chief needs these kinds of things, he should take them to Scott.
There, there they are, right there, where we discussed.
Some of that, some of that, that's not, that's not a complete list of everything we discussed.
The majority of the vehicles they, the, the department's requested are right there.
He's not on there.
Yeah, these are only items funded by the new debt.
Scott just said that the, the chief submitted his budget request, and everything that he asked for was granted.
And can you repeat your statement, um, so the car that we voted on to, to purchase, less purchased?
Yes.
And we did replace a car?
Yes.
Now another car went down.
Exactly.
And so we, we need another car.
We should look at, we should look into that, to make sure Brian has what he needs.
Yeah, so if anything, we would amend the budget this year to replace the current vehicle, if that's what you all decided. For next year, they do have their two vehicles that we've been doing each year. Mm-hmm, with the USDA grant, so nothing in the PD budget has changed.
So, so we need to amend the twenty-one budget to purchase this vehicle?
If we wanted to do it this year immediately to replace the, the down vehicle.
Well, I think at least we'll be put on the next agenda.
Along with those other items.
Along, along with those other items.
We need collaboration with Brian.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think we need to, I think the, the department heads need to, need to relay what they need to Scott, and then we can chime in on that.
Okay.
Try to get it at the next council meeting, so we can get it done as soon as possible.
Okay.
For what Mayor said, the car, the vest, whatever, whatever the, the department needs.
And that doesn't include another officer, which they need also, but this is just equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to keep talking about those things, 'cause I, I mean, I remember that.
Is the other officer in, in the twenty, twenty-two budget?
We need to increase personnel, no?
Well, I think it should be in there.
Well, I think when we get to the police section, then I think we're going to.
We'll talk about it then.
We'll move ahead.
Grants?
All right, real quick, we'll go through the grants, we already talked about a little bit. We have the CDBG grant for the sewer plant, roughly three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Our match will be fifty-two thousand dollars for rehab, clarifiers, bar screen, and compactor. Tech stock grant are the sidewalks over by the schools off of U, uh, right, the grants roughly seven-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. Our match will be a hundred-and-seventy-nine. Uh, the other evening, we talked about the home program grant, I'm not gonna go into that this evening. We also have the USDA grant, uh, here we have the two PD vehicles, uh, the grant's fifty thousand dollars, our match will be thirty-two. Then we have the South Texas Regional Tran, uh, Texas, uh, well, South Texas Regional Training Center, the diesel equipment, uh, grants ninety-three thousand, our match will be a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Then the airport, we have the ramp grant, and then the American Rescue Plan grant as well. And then, of course, we have the American Rescue Plan funds that are coming to the city of roughly, uh, two-point-three million. The first payment will be one-point-one million, which I think we'll receive in August. I'll, go ahead.
That one point, the money that we're gonna receive in August, is that already accounted for?
You mean earm, earmarked for a project?
AMI's.
No, sir.
No.
Not until you adopt the budget.
But it's in the budget?
Correct.
It's in the budget, but you haven't adopted the budget.
Couple of ugly.
Okay, that's where AMI comes in.
If, if you don't want to fund the AMI water meters with the American Rescue Plan funds, that's your, that's your decision?
I'm, I'm just asking, is that, what are the monies allocated for in the, in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll go through the American Rescue Plan as far as how the funds could be spent. Uh, they can obviously be spent on investments in water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, uh, also for premium pay for essential workers. The third bullet point, revenue replacement for the provision of government services. And then the last one, expenditures or negative impacts on small businesses and hard-ed industries like hotels and tourism.
And we haven't even talked about that last item, that there's always the possibilities that we need to help. And we haven't even talked about that last item, that there's always the possibilities that we need to help some people. So that's, that's the reason why I think we need to have more discussion on the American Rescue Plan.
Okay. And then the very last slide, my presentation this evening is the remaining budget calendar. August ninth, city council set a public, we'll set the public hearing dates for the tax rate and budget. Uh, August ninth is our regular scheduled council meeting. August nineteenth, we'll have a special council meeting for the first reading of the budget ordinance. August twenty-third, a public hearing on the property tax rate. And then September twenty-seventh will be the second reading of the budget ordinance and consider approving the budget and property tax rate at that time. You have any questions for me, counsel, or at this point?
When do we get the information from the treasurer's office about the present year tax situation?
I'm sorry?
What we get from the treasurer's office as far as our tax collection and all, when do we?
You mean the county?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll have final numbers at the end of this week, sir.
She's gonna start working this week.
We have preliminary numbers. I think our preliminary taxable value is what, three eighty-five, three hundred and eighty-five million, which is roughly about a forty million dollar increase over the current fiscal year.
Well, they've been notoriously slow in getting that number.
We'll, we'll have it too by the.
Yeah, they were completing the tax roll this week and Melissa was gonna start working on the calculation this week to get the final tax rate.
All right, Judy? Here, here, right here.
Okay, good evening, council and mayor. Uh, I'm gonna present to you each department's cost center. We're gonna go through each fund and I'm just gonna highlight any changes that are being made, if there's no changes, and open up the discussion for you all. Uh, just a brief overview, it'll be in your packet that you have in front of you that has general fund on the front of it. Just to recap on the revenues, um, we have seen a substantial increase, like, uh, city manager stated, the large increase is from the, these grants that we are planning to receive. Uh, it is an increase of almost two million dollars in general fund revenue. So it's getting you to that ten million, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand, seventy thousand, sorry. So I'm just gonna start with the general fund, we'll start in the council cost center. There's no changes to the council cost center, all the, uh, budget expenses will maintain the same. Administration is seeing some changes. We are gonna transition IT personnel costs over to the new cost center in the general fund. It's gonna also include funding for the city hall, city hall remodel, which is seventy-five thousand. Taxes seeing no increase, no changes. Finances, uh, seeing some change, we're separating out human resources expenses to accurately account for the costs that we're spending on employee engagement and personnel costs for HR. Police, uh, like we stated, continuation of the replacement of two vehicles a year. Uh, we participate in the USDA grant, which is a thirty-two thousand dollar match. Municipal court saw a little bit of a change, uh, our staff, our finance administrator, who is directly under finance with me, is splitting her duties with municipal court, training municipal court, our new clerk. Uh, so we're splitting her salary in between the two cost centers. Emergency services, no changes. Animal control services is, uh, going to continue to fund rabies trap and release and look at a, uh, spay and neuter, neuter type voucher, uh, program for the community. We will also be purchasing a vehicle to replace the current fleet, which will be the Ford Transit van. Streets, we're increasing safety equipment to allow for adequate safety supplies for the staff. They did get an increase in personnel last year and have been really close to budget on their safety line. So we want to make sure that they have adequate equipment, boots for the staff. We're also increasing, uh, street repairs. Removal of the street rehab transfers that we're going to the committed restricted now that we're proposing to go out for those bonds. And then the two capital purchases being a vehicle purchase as well as a four-ton asphalt recycler. Library, uh, the computer, the community programs position is gonna be replaced with a computer service tech. Uh, currently the com- community programs director or coordinator was under the library and that's being moved now, uh, to a new cost center.
So is that a new position, the, at the library?
No, it's still currently there, we're just taking out that position and moving it to a cost center so that the library can have the same staff she had before, which will be five full-time and then one part-time aide. We'll also be purchasing a workforce development software to have at the library to promote, uh, job training and basic computer skills, uh, to be offered. Parks was previously combined, uh, in facilities budget under buildings and grounds. It'll now be separated out to accurately account for their expenses. Uh, their capital improvements is gonna be establish a regulation soccer field. This is a really high priority now that, uh, they are gonna be offering the sport here with the school to offer a good place for practices. Um, we'll also be installing scoreboards at the city fields as well as purchasing a vehicle for them.
Well, that soccer field, that's a soccer field, what about the football field?
We're increasing and establishing a maintenance line for the football field, but not establishing a new football field.
Because the areas there just needs to be fixed up to allow for the football.
Yes.
So does that include the scoreboards of the little league fields left?
Yes, still a part of them, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna purchase some in this year and then some in the next year.
Oh.
And we're gonna try and get also people, a lot of people do wanna donate to them, so I haven't, I've got several people who wanna donate to the scoreboards.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be feasible to go ahead and get all the, how many scoreboards do we need total?
Four. But we also have right now the two over Avenue U right now. I'm not sure that they're really completely gone. I need to get the, there's some stuff I'm gonna work on first or if we're just junking them all together, I'd like to try and see if I can fix them first of all.
So what, you're gonna, you're trying to get two out of the four first?
Yes, I wanna work on.
Four.
Cause I have enough money this year where I could purchase, if I have to, I could purchase two this year and then for next year, two the following year.
Shouldn't have any problem getting sponsors for the Avenue U.
No, that's, I mean, we have people already.
One out there, so you might be able to do another two if you don't get, if you get full sponsorship.
Well, I figure if I have four council members, these ones sponsors will know where you're at.
Those, those ones at Avenue U are not in great shape, they, they were in bad shape years ago.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
But, but I, I like the, I like that mindset, try to see if you can fix it.
I wanna give it, cause we can always give the face of it, cause there, the body and everything is there. We can use, utilize a lot of it there instead of having to purchase everything new.
Okay, facilities cost center, of course, is being separated out of buildings and grounds. We're establishing an HVAC contingency line. This will allow for unforeseen HVAC costs that arise throughout the year, uh, to have funding set aside for that, uh, special occasion if that happens. Replacement of the recreation and golf course doors. Currently now, we've had a bunch of issues with those facilities and their doors. So this will allow for adequate doors at the, both of those facilities. And also purchase an AC DC welder and cylinder.
Back to HVAC contingency, what, what, what'd you say that was for?
It's just for any unforeseen HVAC expenses that arise throughout the year. If a unit goes out, if someone needs a new condenser, we have funding set aside for that.
So what needs to be done in city hall could be part of that.
Yes, exactly, so it's for facilities across all buildings, if any little HVAC can happen, expense happens, we have funding that's set aside.
How much is that contingency?
Uh, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Or any, or any, for any facilities, yes, I think that's low too, I agree.
Yeah.
I think that could be used for any facility improvements, not just HVAC.
Yeah, it's labeled as contingency, but the staff's goal was to have it as HVAC specifically, just in case. We've had a lot of HVAC issues come up, we have at least some funding set aside for it.
Maybe I can, we can rip that up over the, over the years, you know, just to, to, to get more.
Agreed, we live in South Texas, we need HVAC.
This building itself needs to HVAC work.
It's cold in here.
Yeah. I'm freezing right now.
We need to maybe lower the temperature, raise the temperature a little bit now.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
But is that enough money for that?
I don't think it is.
I think now it's just a good basis and say a major accident happened, we can then come to you all with a budget adjustment and say, hey, we have this much earmarked aside, we need an additional X amount of dollars.
It's just a start, you know, you can put some money in there.
Amendment by dividend.
I mean, and these are only if the, if it happens, I mean, we could go a whole year not having any HVAC.
Pretty often.
If it happens for next year, it's gonna, not, not gonna be enough.
Are you, aren't you adding a person to the facilities too?
Uh, no, facilities is staying the same, they're just separating out, parks will be, in parks and facilities and facilities.
Bounce that?
Yes. Recreation, we're currently going to purchase a vehicle to replace the current truck. They've had a lot of, uh, mechanical issues with their current vehicle. Golf, establishing, I'm sorry?
That single cab?
Mm-hmm. The F-150.
The director of the unit.
Mm-hmm. It's broken down on them a couple of times.
Sometimes it doesn't start.
It doesn't start.
It'll turn off on us once we've gone into drive, so it's not the safest thing for us to be traveling around. And we've gotten stranded a couple of times here in town, so.
You should have shot it.
It looks nice.
It does, it looks nice, it doesn't look, but.
But if it doesn't start, I mean, instead of buying a truck, couldn't the starter, the alternator battery be checked?
We've put in throughout the years, several different repairs to it and for some reason something else happens. And it's a very old vehicle, it's already a two thousand and six. So it's a, it's a very old vehicle, it doesn't look as old as it is, but.
I got a two thousand and two Suburban that I use every week to go to San Antonio. And the air conditioner, if you keep up with it, everything works on it.
Well, shutting, shutting down while you're, shutting down while you're driving, that's a, that's a, that's a major safety issue right there. And these are, these are city employees.
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm getting at, that, that we need to get somebody to do the maintenance on these vehicles so we won't have all these problems. Cause if you maintain a vehicle, it'll go forever. And I'm telling you by experience, I worked in the service department for years. Like I said, I got a two thousand and twenty, two thousand and two Suburban that everything works on it. And it hasn't let, let me stranded anywhere.
And I doubt, I doubt the Carissa staff do, can do a lot of maintenance.
Well, I'm not saying them, I'm not saying them, uh, Mayor, I'm saying get a facility, get somebody to do maintenance, well, on these vehicles.
We're gonna look into it, counsel.
Yeah, we will. Golf course will be adding additional part-time labor, purchasing a Tri-Mac snake mower and tractor and a purchase of lean-to storage. The lean-to storage will be used to house all his fertilizers and store all of his miscellaneous equipment. Development services, we're establishing the permit technician position. And then city secretary personnel will consist of just the city secretary position. Yes, sir.
I'm stuck. I think we have the same question, if not, he'll, he'll ask his. Development services, establishment of permit, permit technician position. What are these guys doing right now? We've got three, three staff members, Laura's the boss, I understand, but you've got two other able bodies there. That write permits, what, what, what do we?
Laura wasn't able to be here this evening, I would much rather wait for her to be present to address this question. I'll have a, I'll have her address it in a memorandum to council as well. So I don't wanna put words in her mouth this evening.
Yeah, she, she did go over that in our, in our, uh, June seventh meeting. I can look at my notes, but.
Oh, I can find them, I think I asked her that night and, um, it, it, she referred a lot to the issues at hand with the tornadoes. I understand, yeah, they were writing a lot of permits, but that's an announcement, Brett. And to, to have another body.
Let, let me ask.
She referenced the Bativo subdivision, Indian Estates, Garden Park subdivision. And she needed a new farm or a truck, but the extra employee was because of those three subdivisions. I, I don't know, I, I, I.
I think we could talk all night about the development services division, I think we, when we get to that, let Laura explain what she's doing.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna know.
Well, I, I vaguely.
Make a note, make a note, Parky, so you can bring it up when Laura's here, we can ask Laura to press it.
Oh, I'm writing a note, I'm writing a note.
He said he would get a, get a memo.
So I, I vaguely, uh, remember her expressing that right now we have, we have two employees that are writing permits and they're patrolling the, the town and so they're, they're having to alternate. If we have a, a person writing the permits and focused only on permitting, then it, it enables the other two code officers to patrol the streets.
You know, in the past, for this year, I guess, the council was providing reports on certain divisions, police, whatever, including the development services. And part of that report was the number of violations they had, number ones they took care of and all that. And that was good for me to see what they were actually doing. And I think we need to bring that back into the council, among the some of these other reports like the police and whatever.
Why was it stopped then?
I don't know.
Might justify the extra body.
I know, that was very helpful to me, I know, though, some, most of those reports, some of them weren't worth so much, but, but that was. But it included library, direct center, all of them as to what the, what they were doing and the number, number of items that they were taking care of and that type.
I know, I know that in this past year, a lot of the, the complaints have been that we haven't been enforcing, uh, you know, on, on the code side, uh, yards, trash, vehicles, things like that, so.
And this report I'm talking about told us what they were doing.
Correct.
Which was not enough in my mind.
Thank you.
Okay, um, continuing, our nonprofits, I did make a note in your slides that this is subject to change. Uh, we may, uh, add additional funding for American Legion, uh, so that may increase a thousand dollars. Uh, Public Works, uh, personnel to consist of Public Works Director and Admin and then the installation of Public Works Building awning. This awning will allow for coverage on the vehicles out there, equipment. Hopefully help if we have another health storm, they have some preventative coverage. Human Resources will be in its own cost center now, uh, just establishing that as a cost center this year. Information Technology, it's always been established in our committed and restricted fund. Now we're gonna have a sole cost center for information technology that's gonna consist of the IT personnel, uh, salary expenses as well as, um, reflects funding for system backup, security assessment of our city's network. It also includes funding to purchase the vehicle and possibly iPads for council. Funding for the continuation of computer and battery replacement plan as well as replace additional computers at the library. Any questions before I move on to the electric fund? Okay. Just a recap of revenue versus expenses, as you can see, we're budgeting for no deficit, uh, this year. Capital items for the electric division, final phase of AMI meters and establish an AMI meter inventory on hand. Tree trimming, vegetation management, this may change or reduce. Uh, we may be adding in the reconductoring of Highway ninety to be added, so that would be updated in your final proposed, um, your final budget.
Scott is Val here?
No, but David is.
Uh, David Baker's here.
Oh. That said, that bullet, said the bullet point, David?
Tree trimming.
That issue came up heavily this past couple of months. I asked a question because it's on there, tree trimming, vegetation management. Val justified to us that Y'all didn't have, they let, Y'all, meaning the electric department, didn't have time for tree trimming, but yet we're asking for funds.
If we were to try to maintain the, the vegetation management, it would take more than eight people the entire year. When we contract that out, on average, the contractor will show up with five crews and they canvass the area that we designated based on the bid and they will get it done in a matter of three to four weeks and then they're out of here. It, it would consume the electric department to try and maintain just the vegetation.
When, when they have some downtime, because that department is pretty good in their work orders, dang, they stay on top of it, hardworking guys. And I'm sure they experience some downtime, so in that downtime, they, could they just, a snipple here, a snipple there to cut down on the costs?
They do occasionally do some tree trimming, especially if it's imminent problem, like it's getting in the wires or getting them together or service drops. That's all still maintained in-house. This is the overall cutback program to get it out of the lines. And we have quite a list of other maintenance activities that we use, uh, installing AMI, for example, is, is currently done in-house. We have a list of, of transformers that we wanna go replace because it might be leaking or that they're in bad shape. We have quite a hit list of things to do when they're, if they do have any downtime.
One thing we've talked about in the past and we still need, I think, in the, pretty quickly do an ordinance as far as how our residents handle the trees in their, on their yards that overlap into the street. We don't have an ordinance, as far as I know, that requires them to, to cut those. We don't have an ordinance as far as I know that requires them to, to cut those branches and, I mean, they're not on the electric lines, but they're in the middle of the block.
We do have that, cause I just got, I got a letter a couple years ago. I had to do some tree trimming.
Okay, so we do now have an ordinance.
Or maybe, maybe it's just not being enforced.
Well, I know in the south side of town, there are a lot of trees overlapping that street.
But I do wanna say, I don't, I don't think it should be common practice to pay journeyman electrician to trim trees. It, it, it can be... They need to be doing more work in their line, in their line, in their shop.
Well, the contract, you just worked out well in the past year.
I have a question about, uh, it says capital items, maybe I'm getting my, my, my budget experience. Are these just, are these outside services that we're calling capital items?
Uh, I think all of them, even the reconductor would be contracted out for the capital treatment.
But like the tree trimming is, is, is not a capital expense? No, that's actually budgeted and all in.
Maintenance.
Okay, it is. Okay, I just, I'm getting confused with the... Yes, so that's just, you'll see it in the system maintenance.
Yeah, it's in the system.
And I, that, that's what I would say it is, but I just wanna make sure it wasn't. Something, something I didn't know.
No, you're right, it's in the order.
Okay, and then we'll, uh, purchase the bucket, the bucket truck to replace the age equipment and then the continuation of the replacement, uh, pole replacement funding.
What is reconductoring of Highway 90?
I'll let Mr. Baker come up.
Quite a word.
That's our main distribution, right? That runs down 90?
Yeah, Circuit 312 leaves the substation, it comes down basically behind, uh, the businesses on, on 19th. And when it gets to Avenue E, jumps across the ravine and then catches all of the businesses on the south side of Highway 90. That circuit is currently overloaded. Well, let me rephrase it. It is almost at full capacity, which is past the 80% rule. Uh, it has, as of this afternoon, it had 68 amps on it. It's basically good for 80 when it's new and it's decades old. The other problem is that was originally a single-phase line that was converted to three-phase. So it's a combination of number six hard drawn copper and number two ACSR. So it's, it's not that kind of line that we wanna leave forever. So in, in an effort to be proactive, I've, I've had that on my list of things we need to tend to and the sooner the better.
Is that the line that you and I talked about before you left?
Probably. It's, it's the one on my radar, yes, sir.
That... Previous management, they wanna go with it or?
I, I've requested it the past couple of years. I can't remember if it's been two or three, but yes, sir.
Well, those lines right now have, aren't that old. It hasn't been that many years since we redid all those lines going out and covering Walmart and all.
Well, they, they only added the additional phases. Originally it was, it was V-phase or single-phase.
But we got new businesses out there too, so.
Right, the, the load is the issue and, and reliability, that's, that's what I would call the critical circuit.
I think, I think since they were replaced, we've gotten Taco Bell, we got Golden Chick and the tractor replaced. And I mean, there's a lot more businesses on...
Right, right. And, and like I said, that's why I've had them amped periodically. I usually do a summer and winter amping on that circuit to see what the load is. And it's consistently up there above 75%.
Why are you up there? Or are we down on that matter, on the, on the bucket truck?
Yes, sir.
Is that the price for the entire bucket truck or are we gonna do, replace the bed and the bucket to the new vehicle or is this totally new truck?
This is a completely new replacement. In the past, a lot of utilities have tried to recycle the, the unit itself and just put a new chassis under it. And it usually proves to be a failed attempt because when those trucks get over 10 years old, they start, the hydraulics just get to a point where at some point you're gonna have to do what they call a re-hose and that can be 30,000 to 50,000 itself. So it's just not cost effective.
That's what I wanted to know.
It's better...
This price that we have in here is for the whole unit?
Yes, sir. That's a complete cabin or chassis and unit. And that would allow us to recoup something on the, the resale side of the existing unit while it's still out.
Did that law pass where we can't charge, uh, consumable AT&T and all for the maintenance on their lines on our poles? Did that pass last year or so? Where we couldn't charge them for the maintenance we have to do on those lines?
Well, we wouldn't charge maintenance on our lines, but, but in the pole attachment agreement is where we address any fees that we would charge them. Should we like relocate to a new pole in, instead of them doing it? Those provisions are in the new contract that I wanna get...
We can still do that. We can still charge them.
Yes, sir. And while we're on the subject of the buckets and vehicle maintenance, that's, that's an example of where we have scheduled biannual PM maintenance on, preventative maintenance, where we have someone come in and do all the trucks at once on location. Because it's, it's, can be problematic to go to a facility in Waco or even San Antonio for that matter. He comes in, he does all the, all the critical buckets in, twice a year. Does the oil changes, filter changes, hydraulic, does a, a full safety inspection on the boom for cracks and stuff. And then once a year, we have dielectric testing where we test the boom for dielectric and for strength testing. And then we do all our, our rubber goods and hot stick equipment, all on, onsite.
Very good.
That's very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, to move on to water fund? Okay, just a recap of expenses versus revenue. Of course, proposed this year is to have a no deficit or surplus balance. The water division, a continuation of the water facility improvements and fire hydrant replacement. AMI meter conversion and as well as the diesel generator for the golf course well site. Waste water division?
On the revenue side on that, that's up a million six in anticipated revenue?
Yes, it's roughly the, uh, commercial and as well as the AMI is accounted, uh, the, I'm sorry, the American Rescue Plan Act is accounted in this revenue. So that'd be the million dollars to offset the AMI expense.
Is the American Rescue included in that million six?
Yes, yes. Waste water, this year we're planning to budget that personnel that they inherit, uh, got transferred over this year, so you'll see an increase there. Vehicle purchase, a continuation of the SSO sewer improvements at a reduced amount, shoring and steel plates and as well as a dump trailer. Utility billing was moved over to the water fund. Um, decreased in postage, hopes to, uh, outsource the mailing portion of utility billing. Currently, we spend about two, three days stuffing and mailing out all of the bills. This would streamline it where we send it directly to the company. Once bills are finalized, they print, stuff and mail out at a reduced rate for the postage. Currently now, we fund about 20 grand just in postage, not including employee time, paper, toner, all that good stuff.
So it's gonna be cheaper to outsource it?
Mm-hmm. Be, if not cheaper, roughly about the same cost. And it would, yeah, it, it would streamline currently instead of stuffing for a day and a half. It, we would finish bills, send it to the company, the company would be responsible for mailing it out to all the citizens, so.
So that would free up staff for a couple of days?
Mm-hmm.
Is what in the...
Yes, yeah.
To do other stuff?
Oh, definitely. And then in the wastewater fund, we also have the grants, which is the CDBG grant for the wastewater improvements. It includes the rehab of clarifiers, the sluice gate, bar screen and compactor. Our local match, match is $52,500. Any questions in the water fund? Okay, moving to the airport.
Without having to go back, what's the fund balance for the water?
Uh, off the top of my mind, I...
Let's go back a little.
I, I can go back and look for you, Mayor. I think it's around 2.3 million, if I'm correct.
Over the past few years, it used to be nearly zero.
Oh.
So that's because of the rate increases, I guess, and all.
Accumulating over years. I could definitely check for you, Mayor.
Well, I'm just curious because I wonder if some of that money that we have in the fund could be spent on, on the meters?
Definitely. We also looked at other sources of income, um, GovCap, the, the entity where you're looking to, uh, fund those capital items. We were looking at financing it there at a really low rate. I think it was 1.9%, which is minimal. It would be an annual payment of like $160,000. You think if the meter is reading accurately, you're gonna be bringing in more revenue. They could probably easily afford that route if you all don't wanna utilize the American Rescue Plan Act.
Our partial funding with the rest being on, on finance. We need to look at that possibility.
Okay, airport expenses, establishment of the airport grounds maintenance, which the city manager brought up. Continuation of the RAM grant and purchase a mule to, uh, replace the current equipment. Any questions in airport?
Airports are struggling.
It always has. Thanks, Mayor. Was there a mule on that, on that list and equipment?
Yeah.
It was?
Okay.
Yeah, this one won't be financed, it'll be absorbed by the operating cost.
But you're a lot closer to being even than you used to be.
Yes, sir.
That's the goal. Sanitation fund, I just provided a recap, um, of the expenses versus revenue for the new year, uh, but other than that, no significant changes. The debt service or the bond and sinking fund includes the Series 2021. If we issue those 3.5 millions in bonds, it includes that payment. But other than that, no changes either. Our committed fund, we are restructuring it, moving streets to the general capital projects fund. Uh, our court security has to be in a separate fund, so this would house court security, court technology. Um, no changes there other than moving that, um, street financing, street funding to the general capital fund. Perpetual care?
Back, back to sanitation. Is there gonna be any negotiation on that as far as additional work on brush, brush pickup?
I can sit down and speak with Blake about it, sir, uh, but I expect to hear from him probably by mid-August as far as the new rate and I'll talk to him at that time.
Also, there's been comments from citizens about no place to take other items that we can't just dump into the trash?
Hazardous waste?
Yeah.
I'll talk to him about that as well.
Okay.
And like we stated earlier, the perpetual care fund, just reducing those mowing fees expense to general just so the fund itself can sustain itself and it doesn't end in a deficit each year. Other than that, there's no changes to note there. General capital fund, we, uh, this is to fund the completion of the 14th Street Rehab Project and also continue to be utilized for other general capital projects. Economic Development Corporation, the main change here is that transfer that's going from EDC to STRTC to fund that local match for the diesel, uh, grant.
Genevieve's not here tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, I'm just curious about an update on a couple of the items that, uh, that they're, they're working on in, on economic development.
Why is it she, what, why is she not here?
Some of the, the, uh, grant, some of the projects they're working on.
Personnel matter.
Will she be here for later on, tomorrow, whatever? Do we have any questions?
No, sir. I'll speak with you after the meeting.
Sir?
I'll speak with you after the meeting about it.
Okay.
You can answer any questions we have about the EDC.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, moving to the STRTC fund. Uh, we're gonna purchase a forklift there to be utilized at the annex for moving equipment, um, the diesel equipment. Also, the diesel equipment grant, which is a local match of 174,000. On the hotel occupancy tax fund, I just broke down all the entities we'll be giving the funding to. There is a change in reducing possibly the fair associations and adding the Medina County Livestock Association. Maintaining the same amount of expenses, just reducing and adding to another entity.
I understand, I understand the fair association has not presented, presented a request.
Okay. And of course, this is all subject to change versus depending on what is submitted and of course, y'all's decision. The water resource fund, you'll see in that fund just the expense to add it to the fund balances, uh, balance. There is no expenses this year.
Is there any thought about using any of that water resource that's signed to buy additional water rights?
I know it's been discussed previously, but I think from my understanding, we have plenty of water rights currently.
Uh, that's one of those policy decisions that we need to sit down and talk about in a work session, Mayor. Probably do that in the fall when we start some strategic planning.
I don't know what the fund balance there on that now is, but it's getting up there.
I think it's over 200,000.
I think it's right at 190,000, almost 200,000.
I think all y'all know where that money comes from. Off your utility bill, you pay $2 a month going into the water resource line.
And then of course, we established the fair hall fund this year. Um, in it, you'll see the estimated cost that we're projecting it'll cost to maintain it. Of course, like city manager stated, you all can start to plan what you would like to be done and we can then address those expenses at that time. But this is just a basic maintenance on HVAC and janitorial services.
Good job.
Any questions? You're welcome.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Mayor, so we have, uh, all the nonprofits requests. Do you wanna address that tonight, even though council hasn't seen them?
What else do we have to, to address on the budget?
That's it, other than just what you cover every evening?
Might as well do that tonight.
Okay.
Safers may be coming back.
Okay.
Well, we changed the procedure a little bit this year as far as the hot funds and nonprofits, as far as appearances by each one of them pleading their case. I think, uh, there hadn't been much change in, in, in their wants. And so I know the council, basically all the council members have heard a lot of this already. But, uh, I thought with the currents with Mr. Albert, that I would kinda cover what these are. And then if any of y'all wanna look at all of the financials, uh, we could do that one by one or however you all wanna do it. So, uh, starting with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, this is a, uh, pretty much of a repeat of previous years. The, uh, Chamber of Commerce has presented their, their request and, uh, I think it stays at the 65,000 that we have, uh, have given them in the past. It seems like they've done a lot of discussion about their own finances on how they're gonna move forward in the future where they wouldn't be quite so dependent on, on the city of Honda. The money we give them is for hedges and beds. And so that's, they are our tourism arm as far as what, what money we would have to spend if we had our own tourism department or whatever. So they're an arm in that regard. And, uh, they've listed all their programs, their planning in, in the coming year. I think they have their financials. I haven't had a chance to review any of this, but, uh, they're in fairly good shape financially. Uh, they also, besides the city of Honda, they also, uh, have a request to the EDC for, I think it's 20,000 in...
To the EDC?
Yes, the contract, yes.
Which has to be approved by the EDC to come to that.
That's maintaining the same amount there.
We give them 85,000. I think the 20 that comes from the EDC is more from the economic development side rather than the hedges and beds. So it, nothing much changed from, from last year, other than a lot of kinda reorganization within the chamber, which I think is, is moving forward very well. So y'all have any questions on the chamber?
Nope.
And by the way, each of these, uh, hot funds accounts are required to, to meet with the city manager on a periodic basis and provide financials and all on, I think, a quarterly basis.
Yes, sir.
So that we, and that adheres to how we have to spend the hot funds money as far as how, how they have to apply.
Yes, we don't issue the checks unless they submit their quarterly report.
Quarterly reports.
Have they historically done that?
Yes, yeah, we'll hold the checks, we'll hold the checks until they submit it. If they don't submit it, they don't get the check.
They don't get their money unless they do that.
Yeah.
Unless they present their money. The Junior Livestock Board of Directors, this is a new one for the hot funds because of the change in the, uh, fair association, uh, buildings and all. They're requesting $5,000 for their assistance in, in putting on a livestock show. That's just kind of another hedges and beds thing, uh, that, that they act for, for, for the city. And it is, as a result, from quite a few people coming into the county. First, the prospect show that they do one time a year and then the regular livestock, uh, sale and all. I think we agreed pretty much, didn't we, Mr. Albert, that we would, we would not charge them or the fair association for their special events like the prospect show and all that, or rentals, or something.
That was the discussions that we had initially when we talked about taking over the operations and management of the...
Of course, fair association's the same way, but I understand they're not gonna have the fair.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So they have the livestock association asking for, for $5,000 and they have their financials in here, which they're in pretty good shape from what I understand, cash-wise and all. But, uh, it's only proper that we give them some money to help with those, those events. And you can see they got quite extensive financial segments involved in the, uh, in the packet. I think we just received these over the last few days. I think we just received these over the last few days, so I'm sorry that y'all had another chance to review them. Any question on the livestock show?
No, sir.
County museum, Port County Museum, they, uh, they really struggle to do what they're trying to do, uh, the hot funds that they, that we give them help to pay an employee to keep the facility open two to five days a week. And, uh, and I think, I forget what the fund, how much is that, Judy?
What was that, sir? I'm sorry.
How much?
How much was what? I'm sorry.
Museum.
7,500.
7,500.
Yes, sir.
Mainly covers the utilities and that's part-time person. There really needs to be some things done about the museum. Uh, if we're gonna continue to have a, a county museum, it needs to have a lot of enhancements, a lot of money put into it. It is a county museum, but really it's kind of a city. But I think, uh, we've had some discussions and maybe discussions with the county judge about how we can enhance that museum and make it more what it ought to be, because there's a lot of good stuff out there that, that, that they just need a lot of money. But that, but that hasn't changed from previous.
What does the county?
Nothing.
They don't move anything?
Not at all. I think they treat it as a Honda museum also.
Maybe the EDC should work with county on that.
We're working on some plans currently.
As we get into these, you'll find that many times the city is the only one contributing where the other cities in the county are not, or the county's not contributing, and you'll see that throughout the whole presentation.
This is the same thing every year. Nobody does it, but I don't know.
We should, we should reach out.
Well, I really feel sorry for museums, because they...
They, they have, Brett, but they don't vote.
It, it, it needs to be a community thing that, that, that assists them in some way. But, uh, this just kind of gets them by with what they presently have.
Maybe we should change the Medina County Museum to the City of Honda Museum.
Okay, John, you can work on that.
Hey, I like that idea.
Well, if, if we move forward with the museum like we should, something needs to be done along those lines, because it's, it's a valuable asset to the city and, uh, but we just, it's just not getting the funds it needs. And they need to help themselves too in some ways. Any questions on the museum?
Isn't that 7,500 dollars with, don't we work with them on, with, for utilities?
Well, mainly covers that part-time person to be there, and I think some of it may go to utilities also.
We also give them funding through the nonprofit in the general fund. We credit them $2,000 for their utility account.
For utility, yeah.
Yes.
So that may be an ongoing discussion we have in the current year. Let me see, what is this? The, uh, Medina County, uh, rodeo. Uh, we've enhanced over the past few years, money going into the rodeo association, and I think now it's total of?
10,000.
10,000.
Yes, sir.
You know, if you, if you drive out there and see some of their events, you'll find an awful lot of out of, out of Honda license plates and all. Every time they have an event out there, they bring a lot of people into the city. And so we've enhanced this over the years to help them on, on their finances, mainly for, uh, construction of improvements and that type of thing. But it's really a very good, uh, bunch of people, and, uh, they do a really good job. And you've got their profit and loss statement too, which shows it's a, probably a pretty much of a break even every year on the income.
Judy, I forgot to write it down. What, what was the Medina County, oh, 5,000, alright.
Yeah, 7,500 in hot funds, and then we give them 2,000 in utility.
No, 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 the junior livestock.
Oh, livestock 5,000, yes, sir.
And that, kind of up y'all if that wants to be enhanced on some, but I, I think probably in their financial position, they're in pretty good shape with what they have. Fair Association, different matter, but they didn't submit a request. Honda Garden Club, uh, every year they make a heck of a presentation to us. Uh, I think most of y'all are familiar with, with what they do and the tremendous asset they are to the community, especially for the city's beautification programs. And, uh, they presented their financials in it. They also presented their, 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 uh, spending list, which goes to all kinds of, uh, different charities within the city. And, uh, and they stay very solid, but it's a very hardworking group of, of members. And, uh, we've always helped them with some money, and I think we need to continue to do so. What's nice about them, they put a lot into the community with Thrift Shop, and then they use that money to, to go out to, to help other, other people. And, uh, so they have a heck of a, uh, setup out there. My only concern right now is it's an aging group of members, and I don't know how long they can keep up with what they're doing. But right now, they do one heck of a job. And there, we give them $3,000. You can see the donation list, everybody in, a lot in the city and the county.
This is also one of the ones that it's a utility credit. We credit their utility account to help them with their utilities for the year.
And that doesn't actually show up as cash given to them because it's utilities that they're getting. Uh, food pantry, uh, they're, they're, what's their account, what's their?
They get 2,000, and it's also, 2,000, and it's also a utility account credit.
Okay. And they're fortunately, uh, are operating pretty well. It's a, actually a, a county food pantry, but again, a lot of people consider it to be the, the Honda Food Pantry, because Divine has its own and Castroville has its own. And, uh, we don't get any money, uh, they don't get any money, I believe, for this food pantry from the other cities. And you can see their, uh, food pantry expense is kind of hard to read, but, uh, with your leisure, you can, uh, do that. Fortunately, they have the new building now, so that's, that's helped us not having to keep that old building and force out of the airport. Loop on it, uh, uh, Services, this is the group that, uh, that takes care of the abuse to children. They work very closely with the police department and the sheriff department and all that to, to take care of these abused kids, and they provide a lot of, uh, of, uh, services that, uh, that are really needed in the county. You know, it's located here in Honda. And again, this is another one that I think probably doesn't get any money from any of the other cities, or they should, even though every year I think they ask for money, but they, they don't have much luck with that. But they...
For Loop on it, it's 3,500.
Any questions on them? If Mr. Gentry was here, he would make a pretty long extended.
Oh, yes.
Explanation, but, but they do a heck of a job here in, in Honda, and that's, we need to help always some of the other cities that are...
Mayor, have any of these asked for an increase in, on anything? They're just... They're, they're just...
They're just like they were last year, right?
Yes, maintaining the same. The only changes would be adding the American Legion if we do, as well as the livestock, and if we don't fund the fair.
The art leg gets from us every year, uh, how much, Judy?
3,000.
Again, they're, they occupy the, uh, the building on, on the airport. Uh, these people do a really nice job bringing art to our community. They have a special art, uh, school every year for, for the kids in the summertime, week-long, uh, uh, session where they divide it into different age kids and teach them different types of art. And, uh, they have a hardworking bunch of people that, that take care of that, and they provide, to me, a little bit of, some art to the community, which we wouldn't have. That summer art camp, uh, services a lot of kids, three to 12, and, uh, been, been very beneficial for years, and, and, uh, they haven't asked for any additional money. At some point in time, they're gonna need a building, and they talked about trying to get a grant or whatever for a building and haven't been successful so far, but that building is holding up, but, uh, it's an old barracks. And, but they do a nice job of keeping it going. I'm very, uh, supportive of, of that group. They do a nice job with their financials. Again, don't, don't have a lot of, have fun balance, but they, but they work very hard to do what they're doing. And senior center meals on wheels, you've probably heard, uh, uh, Michael Flair last night, it looks like we're gonna finally get a grant to, to build a new building for the beautification center, which badly needed now in that, uh, uh, the old building is pretty well shot. Uh, and, uh, they're occupying a, the old hotel over here, and they don't have near what they need to service the community. So hopefully, the way Blair talked last night, it's probably gonna be the end of the year before we know we're gonna get those funds. Working very closely with the county on the difference in what the building will cost and that $560,000 grant. And, uh, and I think that's gonna work out very well. I know the, uh, Baptist Foundation has indicated that they might support the funding of that building also, because they'll also need new equipment. But right now, they have nothing. And, uh, they service not only Honda with a lot of, of elderly, senior people, disabled people, they deliver to their homes, I think under the new concept with, with after COVID and all, they do a, a once a week deliverance to all the funds of, of that week's meals. They also have a congregant center in Divine, where they drive over to Divine, take food that services people in Divine, and also services in Italian. Another one that doesn't get any help from, from anybody else. They do get, uh, help from the county to fund, uh, a lot of their expenses, but, uh, this is another service that's very vital to, to Honda and, and, uh, we originally set this up to cover, uh, one month's bills for one senior. And I think that's, what's the amount now?
$2,880.
So I think that covers two. And that was kind of the concept of what we would pay them. That still is very low in my mind as to what they, what they do, but, uh, things may change a little bit with new building needs, and at that time, we can, we can look at it again. Any questions on the senior center?
It's already good, what?
How much, 20?
2,800.
2,800.
2,880.
It's two, two meals, uh, two, two persons meals for a month, which is not a whole lot. Okay, hot funds, uh, this is a new request that I kind of indicated to handle and to quest that we try to help them. They have their building out there on 90, that they, where they meet and all, but they only meet like once, I don't know how often they meet, but not very often. And they have struggled having to pay utilities. I know that, uh, the, uh, I think Mr. Valenzuela at one time helped them with getting rid of that big, big light and all, it would cost a lot of utility money. They need about $1,000 in utilities a year to help them with the utilities. The other American Legion does not have a meeting place. They meet in people's homes and all, so they don't have that same problem. So this is a new fund that I recommend very highly and they will. I think that completes it.
But we have one more.
We have one more.
We have the Southwest, that's where we fund the 6,700 that goes into the, the fund that's allocated for repairs at the women's shelter.
Let me explain that. Whenever we built a building with a grant earmarked from, from the federal, uh, we built a building, it's the city of Honda's building. And so in lieu of, of them paying, in lieu of us giving them money to help with the better women's shelter, we give them the free rent for the building, and that, that's a $6,700 cost per year, so it's a washout, as I pointed out, so it's not a cash, cash payment. And, uh, uh, looks like, I don't know what they're doing about the roof, I guess that's included in, in all of our buildings that we...
Yes, sir.
Again, a very big service. They, they serve not only Honda, but county service area, if you're in need of their services and you're from Eagle Pass and you walk in there, they take care of you. So the average, one to two to three families at all time in the center, but not only from Honda. So again, a very necessary service to our, to our people. So that completes it. The only, uh, I think the new ones will be the American Legion and, and the, and the livestock association. It'll be in the budget for those amounts, so when we approve the total budget.
So I'll just have to add the American Legion for the thousand, and then if the fair does not request funding, we'll just absorb it with the livestock?
Well, the fair association, I understand they're not gonna have the fair this year. And so I, I don't know what their plans are, but they didn't request any money.
Didn't they get 10,000?
They did. And they provided financials and all. That was for, mainly for the heads and beds thing. And, uh, but they haven't submitted a request, and we've always struggled with getting the information that we need. And so that may be something we look at for the next year.
Okay, mayor, I just want to remind everybody that on August 9th, which is a regular council meeting, you'll be setting the public hearing dates for the tax rate and budget. Maybe on August 9th, we'll set some time on the agenda as well for council to recommend any changes to the budget at, at that time. Because on August 19th, you'll have a special council meeting that have the first reading on the budget ordinance. So I'd like to wrap things up as far as any changes that you may want to consider at our next regular scheduled meeting, be it the 9th. So if you want to reach out to me and talk about those changes, uh, until then, that'd be great.
I assume you took some notes on some of the?
I did, sir.
We, uh, just, uh, and, and really would like for you to meet with us on the American Rescue Plan before the final budget.
Uh, sir, can you remind me who was all, do you want them to be?
Me, myself, Wes, and...
Okay.
Anything else, guy?
Yes, sir.
Quick session, very good.
Thank you. Good job.
And a motion to adjourn. Your second? All in favor? Did y'all take a notation? Did y'all take a notation on, on that motion and who?